I would like to welcome everybody to committee of the hall this evening. It's 6:00 PM, Monday, April 12th. We have one item on our agenda this evening, and it's forestry program update. And I saw that Ian Gray had joined us, and I think he's going to go ahead and make the presentation for us. Ian?
Good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay?
Fine.
All right, excellent. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, committee chair, council members. Really great to have the opportunity to talk about the forestry program. I'm going to start with my screen chair, and hopefully everything will work.
There it is.
All right. Can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Excellent. All right. Parks, Planning, Natural Resources, Forestry Program Update. Now that COVID-19 appears to be trailing off, I don't want to jump the gun, but hopefully, excited to get back to core programming for forestry and continue the mission of making our urban forest a sustainable asset by keeping trees healthy and residents safe and enjoying the benefits of having vibrant green spaces in our city. So without further ado, we'll jump right in. So I have three big highlights for you today, three big pieces. We'll have a quick look at the recent tree inventory update that was completed at the end of last year, beginning of this year. We'll also have a quick review of By the Numbers 2020 Annual Report, the work that we did last year, and then we'll finish off with what we've got planned for the future and some sustainability considerations. And a big piece of this is going to be the new Urban Forest Management Plan, which is due to be renewed. So what we've done today, hopefully, what I'm aiming for is that everybody has a better understanding of where we are headed with the forestry program and that trees aren't just pretty to look at or sit under.
Okay.
Essential part of cities' infrastructure.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Ian. And would you like to take questions as you go, or do you want us to hold those?
Let's, I think it might be useful, there may well be some questions after I do the piece on the tree inventory. I'm happy to field some questions then, and then maybe we can save the rest for the end of the presentation.
That sounds good.
So hopefully you all received copies of the summary report for the tree inventory update, or maybe even had a chance to look at it online. It's part of the Core Maps GIS system. But before I go any further, I definitely wanted to give a big shout out to Davy Resource Group, led by Ian Scott. They were our consultants on this project. They did all the data collection, the field data work, and then produced the summary report, which hopefully you've seen. The other big shout out I have and thank you is to IT GIS, in particular, our own Gary Del Rosario. Gary did much of the heavy lifting with the data work, once the new information was collected and ready to import into Core Maps and the tree inventory database. Now, there's a wealth of information here. If you've ever spent time trolling around in the Core Maps section at the city website, you'll see that there's layer after layer of information there. You could be down the rabbit hole all day if you're so inclined. I'll be happy to try and answer some questions about that later on. But with respect to the new tree inventory database, it's worth bearing in mind that an up-to-date tree inventory database is a super powerful management and planning tool, and it really helps us with our annual program and particularly with managing the work plan over the course of 10 years, which is our next step. Once the online database is actually used by many departments, including the Planning Department, Public Works, and the list goes on, as well as the general public. And if you get a chance to explore online, you'll probably notice that we've added some spaces that have never had inventories done before. What you see up on the slide right here is actually a shot of the database from the golf course. So we added, gosh, I don't know, 1,600 trees on the golf course that had never been inventoried before. So we're finally catching up with some parcels here and there across the city that were never accurately represented before. So that'll definitely help us keep those trees healthy and maintained in the future Okay, let's dive into some of the details, some upper level highlights anyways. For starters, you'll probably notice that the sort of big working number that we had in the past was about 130,000, and that's changed downwards a little bit. And the main reason for this is some increased accuracy in the way that we sample and estimate the number of trees in natural areas. So just so you understand, we don't count every single tree by, you know, actually seeing it and touching it in the natural areas. They're just too widespread or too swampy to actually count them accurately. And we don't actually manage those trees as actively as we do trees in parks and along the streets. So we do a plot sampling method, but this time we're able to introduce a little bit more accuracy to it, so we've got a slightly smaller number. But the main reason for that is the sampling method, more than anything else. So we now have roughly 117,000 trees, 26,000 street trees, 90,000 natural area trees. It's a healthy number. The big takeaway from all of this really is that these are really valuable assets, and these are some of these big numbers that I'm trying to show you here in some of these very simple charts. So these are very valuable assets, well north of $120 million. So just, for example, in streets and park trees alone, that comprises 655 acres of canopy cover, which helps keep our city cooler, helps keep that urban heat island under control. And that equates to, for example, 13,500 tons of sequestered carbon that would otherwise contribute to global warming. Natural area trees alone mitigate north of 460,000 gallons of stormwater every year that would otherwise run off into rivers off of streets and add to polluted rivers. So trees are really environmental workhorses. In the course of doing this inventory report, we used some of the more modern tools called iTree Eco, which allows you to assess and measure some of those benefits that, you know, the work that the trees are doing for you. And they really do underline that trees are hugely important pieces of our city's infrastructure, a green infrastructure, yes, but they're one of the best ways to help make cities pleasant and livable. It creates what we call an urban forest ecosystem.
Ian, I know we talked about holding the questions, but can I just ask one I think is important to clarify?
Feel free to jump in, feel free to.
Okay. Yeah, so this chart that we're enjoying here.
Yes.
So when it says annual benefit, that's the per-tree benefit? Is that right?
So that's the total, that's the total, for example, annual benefit from park and street trees. Now, this measures a limited number of categories, like stormwater, like sort of carbon sequestration, like notional savings on heating and cooling. So it's a finite selection of variables, and you'd have to jump into the back of the inventory report to see what variables they're measuring. And I say it's conservative because there's other values that trees contribute that we don't actively measure, more of the aesthetic benefits. And there's all sorts, there's all sorts of other metrics. There are studies that show that surgery patients recovering from an operation recover more quickly if they're looking out onto a tree-lined, a woody landscape. Cars drive more slowly down tree-lined streets. People spend more time shopping in rural districts.
Okay.
Trees.
Okay. And then I was going to ask, what, how big does a tree need to be to be measured, to be a part of this count?
So we, our street tree standard is two inches, but typically we're looking at six-inch trees. That's what we would call a significant tree. So that's kind of our starting point. But when we did the inventory, we're counting anything in the right-of-way or parks at two inches and bigger.
Okay.
Yeah. In terms of trees that meaningfully contribute ecosystem benefits, as we call them, normally a tree, it takes a while to get a return on your investment, but, you know, 10, 15 years in, then a tree's big enough to start throwing some shade, absorbing some stormwater, and actually, you know, contributing environmental benefits.
Okay. And that helps, Ben, now I understand. So when we say value, that's the total, what you would, if you could assign, an economic value, and it's kind of intangible, but that's the total value of the tree, and then there are the trees in that category, and they're, they are providing collectively that annual, every year, that benefit.
So there's an, yeah, you're correct. The annual benefit, the last column, the value, is a notional estimate of what it would cost to replace all of those trees.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a conservative number, so.
Thank you very much. I just want to make sure I understood that. Appreciate it.
And President Foreman, if I could have Ian just clarify the two-inch, six-inch, they're not two-inch height trees, they're calipers so that the public...
Yeah, that's a diameter measurement at Chester.
Right, yeah, and I understood that, but I think for the public, that's a good point, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, yeah, and I mean, you'll see in the inventory report, there's a little section where I pulled out, or we pulled out, some notable trees across the city. We do, really do have some wonderful specimens in Renton. In terms of, and you'll see, like, we break down the percentages of the different species. The top three for Renton are all native trees, big leaf maples at 14%, Douglas firs at 10%, cottonwoods at 9.5%. You'll also see that we break it out in terms of maintenance need. This is the wonderful thing that inventories can do. So I can now go into that database and say, okay, show me all the big leaf maples, 25 inches and bigger, that I need to keep an eye on, just because that's a good thing to do for risk management. So it's a really useful tool moving forward. All right. Any other questions on the tree inventory before we move on to the next piece? No? All right. So now we're going to get into sort of By the Numbers, the work that we did last year. So accomplishments-wise, yes, Citywide Update to the Tree Inventory was the big effort. That was a year-long project. I just got confirmation that we're going strong with our Tree City USA awards. We're into year 13, and we've had 11 consecutive years of growth awards. This year's growth award obviously was based on doing that tree inventory. That's an important piece that they put a lot of value on. We also completed a lot of backlogged priority tree work, so we're just about getting to that point where we can start thinking about routine cyclical maintenance, as they call it. So instead of just putting out fires all the time, you're actually getting ahead of the curve. So that's where we want to be. Ongoing work, it's still a work in progress, but we're making inroads, trying to get the information out there about how best to prune your trees, not to topple them. Once we get back on track with the long-range planning, hopefully we'll be able to do some more work on some further tree ordinance updates. That's still on the docket. And then there's the, you know, the constant tickover of, you know, maintenance contracts and tree planting, and there's always room for improvement there, but I am confident that we're making strides on making the maintenance routine more of a cyclical and standardized By the Numbers, that includes 10 contracts executed and completed. That includes our, you know, on-call contracts. Those are service providers that give us after-hours stuff when we have emergencies, storm damage, which is really critical for keeping our streets clear and safe. And you see this picture here, this gentleman, Chris Rippey, he specializes in high-tech diagnostics. This is a system called a sonic tomogram. This is one of the trees, the elm trees, American elm trees in Jones Park, and it sends a sonic ping through the center of the tree, back and forth between the centers, between the sensors, and it shows you if there's any decay in the wood without actually having to cut into it. So it gives you a sort of X-ray of the tree, of the health of the tree. We have been losing some trees there, leftover Dutch elm disease issues, so I'm trying to nurse the last couple of big American elm trees that we have there through, and we'll see how they do. So that's just a snapshot of some of the fun stuff that we get to do with forestry. Okay, this is just a quick representation of, you know, some of the milestones, if you will. The cover page of the inventory report with the iconic maple trees in Jean Cullen Park there, and then I've got an example of some of the promotional material that communications produced for community services. This was a no-tree-topping door hanger that we worked on and that we're actively using. And this is more just an information piece. It's a quick way to relay information to people. If they're not at home, you can just stick it on the door, the door handle, and it's got contact information on, so they can contact us with more questions. So it's just the starting point. There's plenty more work to do on that front, but just some milestones of some of the examples of the work that we're doing. And these are just some raw statistics, just an example of the volume of things that we do, including everything from the inquiries that come in from Renton Responds, work requests from other departments. Some of this is representative of the Inspecting Arborist program that we run, some of the inspections that happen through that, various examples of the amount of trees pruned, removed, planted, watered, which is a big piece of the work that we do during the summer to keep things growing. So, yeah, it's a constant process, and it definitely adds up. There's a lot of work that gets done. Okay, this is probably going to be the more interesting piece, and there's a lot to digest here, so we'll definitely, I'll definitely be ready for some questions from you from this piece. So breaking news here is that forestry is actively negotiating with a consultant to try and get a contract written to help us produce the next 10-year Urban Forest Management Plan. The current one is expired, and we're ready for the next 10-year step. In the course of thinking more closely about components for that plan, there really are some important sustainability considerations. On the one hand, we are unfortunately having to deal with the reality that there are some large global system effects that we'll need to prepare for due to climate change. For example, the most immediate impact for this will be higher temperatures in urban centers, what we refer to as the urban heat island. And subsequently, a greater need for supplemental tree watering. That's one of the things that affects me and this program directly, is I really need to pay attention to whenever I plant new trees, I've got to keep them watered, otherwise there's no point doing it. And, you know, enhanced preparation for things like extreme storm events. If we're doing a better job of maintaining and keeping our forest, or keeping our urban trees pruned properly, impacts from storms are less severe. So that's really critical that we stay on top of that. And unfortunately, yes, we're going to have to start thinking a little bit about potentially dealing with issues from wildfires. I know typically, even though I haven't been out here for a long time, it's not something that affects the west side so much, but unfortunately, we did see a little bit of that last year, and it's something that we're going to have to be aware of. So it's a question of preparedness, and that's going to be a piece of the next Urban Forest Management Plan. We don't have much control over global systems, but we can control other things like watering budgets and being able to respond to negative impacts from storms. On the other hand, an area that we can manage more directly in the city concerns infrastructure and development, and this is something that all departments deal with, obviously. And let's be clear, trees are definitely part of the city's infrastructure. I can't emphasize that too much. They're green infrastructure, but they're also valuable city assets nonetheless, as was clearly presented in the tree inventory report. The harsh reality is this, across the country, most municipalities are registering declines in their urban forests. Canopy cover is dropping, and it has been for decades, unfortunately. To some extent, this is due to simple weight of numbers. There's more and more of us. There's, you know, we're into infill development in the extreme, you know, and that's the challenge. The further challenge moving forward is if we really value environmental sustainability and, as for example, per our 2021-2026 business plan goals, how do we in fact support planned growth and pursue initiatives to preserve and expand open spaces and tree coverage? That is our unique challenge. There's always going to be give and take, and then, you know, sort of honing in on that is the real challenge. Sorry, jumped ahead there. So the facts are these. For many years, it's been tough for Renton to plant as many trees as they remove, and that's just for public trees, trees that Renton owns and maintains. Remember, the urban forest is a combination of both public trees and private trees, and in fact, there's a lot more trees on private property than there is on public property. Unfortunately, I'm fairly sure that when canopy cover data is next updated in 2023, the last time we had the study done was in 2018. It showed we had just under 29% canopy cover. I suspect that it may tick down. Variety of reasons for that, there's obviously some big infrastructure projects going on. You've probably seen the widening for 405. They've been mowing down trees at the side of the highway. That's all wash, dot easement, and there's not, we don't have a lot of control over But the fact is, the data doesn't look great elsewhere. In a very recently published report, the King County 30-Year Forest Plan, which just came out a couple of weeks ago, King County Incorporated Areas lost over 10,000 acres of urban forest, and that's in incorporated towns and cities. That doesn't include unincorporated areas in King County. So that's a lot. That's a lot of infill, that's a lot of development, that's a lot of growth. So that's just something to keep in mind. I mean, Renton's doing okay with, you know, 25% canopy cover. It does place 34th out of 45 municipal counties in King County for canopy cover, but we do have cities in King County that are remarkably tree-covered, so, you know, take it with a bit of grain of salt, but it's something that you definitely need to monitor and keep control of. So as I was saying, King County as a whole lost 10,000 acres of canopy cover in the last 24 years, dropping from 23% to 18%. So we're above that average, but it's something we should be monitoring. Better and more equitable tree planting is an important component of this for the future for keeping our forests sustainable. But I'm going to underline that tree preservation actually gives you far more bang for your buck in the near future. Why? Very simple. Big trees confer far more benefits, oxygen, air purification, stormwater absorption, carbon sequestration, shading, cooling, et cetera. The list goes on. Remember, it takes a long time to get a small tree to that stage where it's returning those benefits. Takes roughly 10 to 15 years to establish a tree and start again to return on that investment. Yes, it is absolutely worth it, but why not do a better job of protecting what you already have? It takes a long time to move the needle in terms of canopy cover simply by replanting. So you really need to think about trying to protect healthy, large trees as long as possible. That's my big message for you there. Unfortunately, all too often I see trees sacrificed for lack of maybe creativity or willingness to accommodate designs, which, yes, it is a consideration, might be a bit more time-consuming and expensive. Is it worth it? Well, in my mind, and hopefully yours, undoubtedly. Of course I'd say that though, because I'm the tree guy. Speaking for the trees, but hopefully, I'm also preaching to the choir here. Unfortunately, the reality is that too often people, I hear people say, oh, it's only just a couple of trees, one small project, what's the difference? The problem is, is that over the sequence of multiple public and private projects, that equates to hundreds of trees lost annually. So this is the, this is our unique task, to try and thread that needle between making sure that we have the gray infrastructure that constantly has to get updated for our neighborhoods and our city systems, and at the same time, make those neighborhoods pleasant, livable spaces, and invest the time and money on saving those big trees where we can, giving a little bit here, taking a little bit there, you know, finding the right balance. So that's where, you know, being very thoughtful about those business goals is so important. So what might you ask would be my top priorities moving forward for the forestry program? I think I've got probably four main ones. I've mentioned the tree watering piece. I could plant a lot more trees, but I just can't keep them alive. But, I mean, the watering budget is a really important piece of that. Better tree protection and preservation ordinances, that's on the books. We're looking at it, so, but really following that through to the next stage. We need to be doing a good job, better job of regular tree replacement for the right-of-way. And again, we only, we only control a certain amount of space in the right-of-way. The city, there's a limited number of planting spots, really. If you look at the inventory report, it shows that we're at what we call a stocking level of 93%. That means there's only another 7% spaces left that we could actually put trees in. It only equates to, you know, a couple of thousand trees. So we have a limited amount of space within which to, you know, plant new trees, so that's why it is so important to try and protect those existing big trees. And the one other piece that we came very close to before COVID, and then we're into a hiring freeze and the whole nine yards, the creation of an in-house forestry crew was something that was spelled out in the previous forestry plan, and we never quite got there. We were very close, like I say, before COVID. Hopefully, we can revisit that, because I think that would really enhance our maintenance program and sustainability. So with all that said, I know that's a lot to digest. Thank you for your attention. I'd be happy to try and field any questions if you've got them.
Okay, well, thank you. It's a great presentation, and we've already got one hand up. Council member O'Halloran has a question.
Yes.
Yes, hi. Thank you for your presentation. My husband and I went for a walk along the Cedar River down by the dog park. Earlier in the week, and I noticed just, just to the north and just to the east of the dog park, there are quite a number of large trees that are engulfed in ivy.
Right.
And so I'm wondering, in terms of preserving our large trees, are we actively cutting ivy at the trunks?
We have in the past. It's not something that I've been able to spend much time on recently, but I think that would be a great opportunity for stewardship programs and volunteers, because it's a fairly manageable task. All you have to do is, as you probably well know, is cut, you know, like a one-foot-tall strip all the way around at the base of the tree, and that will pretty much do it. You have to keep coming back, but it's something that's a good, a good task for volunteers. When we see something particularly, you know, particularly egregious, we'll try and address it in the course of our rounds, but it's something that needs to be done much better. But it's something that needs to be done much better because as you well know, it will choke some trees out or make them so heavy that they fall over in a storm event. So.
The ivy was literally 50, 60 feet up in the air, tree after tree after tree after tree.
Right. The particular challenge is that that's, yeah, it's on the edge of natural areas. Like I say, we don't actively manage trees in the natural areas. We do try and monitor trees on the periphery, those sort of interface trees on the edge because obviously the general public will be closer to that part of the natural area most of the time. So that's an area where we could definitely do better work, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Benedetti.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Ian. This was a great presentation. I look forward to it every year in the two that I've been able to see. And you know, it's really wonderful seeing the dedication that is really making our city so much more livable with this, to try and preserve and hopefully improve our tree canopy. So I had a question with, you know, we've been seeing opportunities to convert spaces that have been largely retail and thinking of Sunset and then possibly some other spaces in the community that where we're going to be repurposing them more toward a residential use. And in that, is there an opportunity to plant trees and where pavement once was and increase the canopy and improve the quality of life for the residents who are going to be living in those developments?
Yeah, definitely. One of the nice things that happened with the previous bit of ordinance work that we did in 2019 is Community Economic Development made an effort to loop me into some of the early land use pieces when they're looking at new developments so that I can weigh in on possibly trees that might be worth keeping. Or then subsequently, when you get to the construction permitting piece, if there's a right of ways, things where trees could go in or they're looking at plant pallets or types of trees to use, I've been trying to help them with recommendations for suitable plant material or species choices, that sort of thing. And so, yeah, that relationship is blossoming and I look forward to doing more of that. But yes, I mean, land is such a premium. Whenever there's an opportunity, you can definitely mitigate the soils and make it suitable to plant trees that will have a chance of success. And yeah, I mean, designers have a good idea, a far better idea than on the design of that sort of thing than I do. But I've got a pretty good idea of what works and some stuff to stay away from. So the combination of those pieces of expertise should help contribute to making, you know, nice green spaces in these communities. But yeah, whenever there's an opportunity, I'll definitely be jumping on that. It can be a real challenge to find spaces to accommodate particularly trees that get big at maturity. That's the challenge. Often you get small trees put into landscaping designs and they don't really do much for you in terms of shading or ecosystem benefits. So that's emphasizing those planting of large stature trees is really important.
Great, great questions. Actually, I have one of my own that's sort of a follow-up to that. Ian, are you available to the community if somebody is doing a small development somewhere and wanted advice about trees? Is that a service that you are capable of doing? I don't know how you manage your time. Can you take those kinds of calls from the community or?
You know, I try and give people snippets of information. With Community Economic Development, we did put together a draft street tree selection guide to point people in the right direction. So there's information like that out there. It's certainly something that I hope to do a better job of moving forward and plan it, bake it into the next urban forest management plan in terms of things like neighborhood groups, volunteer events. So you have that stewardship piece and people planting trees in their own neighborhoods, whether or not it's public property. I do have limitations in terms of inspecting and advising on private property just because I really, liability wise, have to restrict myself to public property. But that doesn't mean we can't offer people tips and advice to help make their project successful. So but like I say, that community piece is definitely something that I hope to be a bit more involved in moving forward.
Thank you. I see the Councilmember McGurven has a question.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. That was actually the perfect lead-in to my question on private property owners. Clearly, that's going to be a very large piece of the puzzle. I mean, preservation certainly stops the loss of canopy coverage, but if we want to actually gain it back, I mean, we're going to have to grow it and it's going to have to be on private property. And as we continue to work on things like creation of new affordable housing, we're going to lose some along the way. So the restoration is going to be a big part of that. So working with, I completely agree that working with existing property owners is super important. And it's good to hear the feedback that we have limitations on what we can do on private property. Are there partnerships with groups like Forterra or King Conservation District that we could use to? Because I think it's intimidating for a lot of property owners to know what type of tree to plant. I mean, they don't have the information necessarily. It feels like we have the perfect opportunity when everyone's at home. I know I see lots of neighbors doing yard work and to get them to find the right tree and the right location for their yard so that it's going to actually produce a benefit, like shading for their house, preferably not on the side that they have the solar panels, but that we can get those benefits you spoke about.
Yeah, I'd agree 100%. I think it would be very worthwhile to curate a better selection of materials so that you can point people in the right direction, whether it's a further page on the website with links to planning recommendations for just whether it's your own backyard or trees that work in the soils that we have around here. And that's something that we can certainly put together, building off of something like our recommended street tree guide. What side of the house do you plant trees on, depending on what type of tree it is or what you're trying to achieve with garden design? Yeah, there's a wealth of material and having a starting point for people, I think, would be a good place to go. So yeah, I think that would be a useful thing.
Thank you. Councilmember Benedetti.
Thank you, Council President. So Ian, in a couple of different contexts, you mentioned the usefulness of volunteers. And I'm wondering if that is something that is still actively available right now or if that has been something that was put on hold? The ability to volunteer in this context, if it was put on hold due to COVID and when it might be, if it was, when it might be available again for people to be able to contribute to their community by helping the trees?
Yeah, unfortunately, it was completely curtailed with the onset of COVID-19 and the protocols that were put in place to keep everybody separate and healthy. It's just starting to change now. In fact, I participated in the first small volunteer event with Teresa Nishi. Last Friday, we had a couple of volunteer groups and we planted some trees and ground cover at Heritage Park. But that was the first thing that's happened since, geez, I don't know. I think I did a Forterra event like a year and a half ago, but it's been a while. It's really cramped that program. And to be honest, so much more can be leveraged. I hope to work with some neighborhood groups with Dre Hicks and MJ. So yeah, there's all sorts of opportunities. We have not had a chance to really explore that because of COVID. So fingers crossed, hopefully that'll change.
Thank you. Councilmember Perez.
Thank you. Hi, Ian. Thank you. Great presentation. When it's our birthday and normally we plant a lot of trees, trees and plants around the area, who is in charge to make sure that those receive enough water during the summer to make sure that they make it through the year, you know? Because I know that a lot of effort and work is put through with volunteers and staff members to plant sometimes big trees or different plants, but then there are areas or parks that don't have irrigation and they don't survive. So who is in charge to make sure that those efforts don't go to waste?
So it's a mixture. If it's street trees, I'm responsible for getting them planted and then subsequently keeping them watered. So they go onto a big list. If I scrolled back through, I don't know if I'll be able to find it right away. But yeah, so here you'll see trees watered, 400 trees were watered every week during the height of the summer. So anything that I plant or the forestry program has planted, that goes onto a master watering list for probably, those trees will be on there for four, five, six years until they're big enough to make it through a warm summer on their own. And then we'll take some off the list and we'll add some new ones on. So those are trees that I'm responsible for that we replace in the right of way. If they go into parks, it'll probably be Colleen and Steve's crew that will make sure that they're getting caught by sprinkler systems or they're watered independently. And so that'll go for some of those planting beds that you'll see on the edge of parks or in landscape strips. The other piece are those landscape, contract maintained landscape strips that we have around town. So I've got a maintenance program for those. These are typically strips like rain gardens that come with infrastructure or service water development or infrastructure updates. I inherit that maintenance piece. It goes to a contractor. Sometimes the irrigation is built into the ground. Sometimes we have to water it independently. But it's a bit hit and miss. I mean, not all of those landscape strips were installed with permanent irrigation in the first place. Sometimes they just survive because there's a little bit of extra water that flows off of the tree planting that happened and the tree watering that subsequently takes place. But yeah, it's kind of a group effort. I do a bit, Parks does a bit, and between the two of us, anything that we plant, we try and keep an eye on and keep watered. I'm not going to claim that it's 100% successful. There's always something that falls through the cracks. But yeah, if you would have told me when I was moving out to Pacific Northwest two years ago that you have to water things, I would have laughed. I had no idea you had to water things in the summer to keep them alive out here. But there you go. That's the reality we live with and we do our best to try and make sure we keep things alive.
Good. Thank you. Any more questions from council or final comments? Okay, well, Ian, yeah, I also always look forward to these presentations and the trees clearly have the right person speaking for them. We thank you.
Thank you for your time. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you so much. So we can find the report just navigating through the city's website to go deeper into the data that you were talking about.
Yes, you'll find a link in the forestry webpages. If you go to, how do I go to Community Services? Click on the Forestry tab and there's a bunch of reports at the bottom that you can click on and there's a link to the report there.
Okay, well, we certainly appreciate you keeping an eye. I guess one sort of final question and comment you made me think of is I'm sure would like to see if we can get the Department of Transportation to do a lot of replanting as part of their big freeway project. I know they'll, you know, you can't replant where you've put pavement, but you could certainly replant in the margins and we should make sure that they're doing that as much as they can.
Yeah, I'd love to have seen it done differently, but they're kind of a power unto their own. We'll definitely try and hold their feet to the fire a little bit and try and get a good finished result. It's going to be a disruptive process for a couple of years, but hopefully we'll get some stuff going there again soon. I know our PP&amp;R group has some plans for the May Creek Trail Extension, which goes through underneath there. So I think there's an opportunity to improve that environment once they've done all the bulk grading and construction work.
Well, if you have ideas, don't be shy about asking the council for assistance. If there's anything we can do, reaching out to those other agencies on your behalf.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And with that, oh, you're waving goodbye, right, Councilmember Halloran? Okay, just making sure you're not raising your hand the last time. Yeah, I'll say goodbye and we'll reconvene in 15 minutes at the regular council meeting. Thank you all very much. Good night.
Thank you, everyone.